Welcome to Burlington's Candidate Forum. My name is Alan Foles and I'll be moderating the discussion. I'm joined by a press panel to ask the questions. On my far right is Joy Richard, standing in for Christine Warren, editor of the Burlington Union. Next to her is Rich Hosford, B News Director here at BCAT. At this session, we focus on the school committee. We have four candidates for two three-year positions. Welcome to Burlington's Candidate Forum. My name is Alan Foles and I'll be moderating the discussion. I'm joined by a press panel to ask the questions. On my far right is Joy Richard, who will be standing in for Christine Warren, editor of the Burlington Union. Next to her is Rich Hosford, B News Director here at BCAT. At this session, we focus on the school committee. We have four candidates for two three-year positions. Christine Monaco, the current school committee chairman, is a 43-year resident of Burlington, who's been on the school committee for 20 years. She worked in the Burlington Schools as both a homebound teacher and a special needs educator for over a decade. Tom Murphy was raised in Burlington and spent seven years as an elected town meeting member before being elected to the school committee in 1995. He's a practicing attorney in a Burlington law firm. Karen Levy has been a resident of Burlington for the past 13 years. She's a corporate attorney with over 20 years of experience, focused specifically on negotiating and drafting contracts. She also has 10 years of experience as a dispute resolution specialist and volunteer mediator with our local court system. David Levitt has lived in Burlington with his family for 12 years. After practicing law for several years, he worked as a project manager for an education research firm and currently works at Bunker Hill Community College as Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness. Welcome, everyone. All right, the ground rules. Here's how we're going to proceed. Each candidate will start by offering a one-minute opening statement. We've decided on the order through a drawing. After that, our press panel will begin asking questions of the candidates. Each candidate has 90 seconds to answer. We'll alternate between members of the press panel as well as the candidates for the first response. If the question has a follow-up, we'll allow that as well. Next, each candidate is allowed to ask one question of all of the other candidates, again with 90 seconds to respond. Finally, each candidate will give a two-minute closing statement. Again, we've drawn for the order. In the interest of covering as many subjects as possible, we'll try to keep a close watch on time. I've got my stopwatch. So frame your responses accordingly. If everyone's all set, we'll get started. All right, our opening statements. Our first candidate is Thomas Murphy.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for listening. Happy St. Patrick's Day to those who are celebrating it. As Alan said, I'm a lifelong resident of Burlington. It was a great place to grow up. It's been a great place to raise my children. In fact, three of my siblings also live in town, so Burlington's been a very special place for the Murphy family for many years. When I was a child, my parents were very involved in town affairs. Consequently, I was raised to appreciate public service and civic commitment. In addition to being an elected town meeting member for seven years and a school committee member, I've been involved in many civic organizations, charitable events, things like that over the years. Burlington's been good to me, and I've been very willing to give back when I can. I was first elected to the school committee in 1995. I'm very proud of all the accomplishments and the progress that have been made since then. The school department is in a very good place right now. We've built new buildings. We've constructed new athletic fields. We've got a technology integration program that's nationally known. And we're a tier-one, the Burlington High School is a tier-one school under the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education ratings. Being a school committee member is a very important position. It's one that I take very, very seriously. I've enjoyed every minute of the time being a school committee member. I remain a very passionate and committed member, and I look forward to another three years of challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Levitt.
Hi, I'm David Levitt, and I'm running for school committee. And I say that because although there are four of us running for two positions, I don't feel that I'm running against the other candidates. I'm running for the position of school committee member based on my own merit. I feel that I have a unique set of skills and experience that can help lead the Burlington School Committee into the 21st century. I've lived in Burlington for 12 years, and I have a first and third grade students at the Fox Hill. I'm currently coaching soccer and lacrosse in town, and currently working at Bunker Hill Community College. But before I worked at Bunker Hill Community College, I worked for an education consulting firm, traveling the country, performing evaluations for the National Science Foundation, evaluating programs that they have funded on STEM education reform. I've traveled to rural locations like a remote village in Kodiak, Alaska with 230 people. I've traveled to Indian reservations in the southwest, in the plains. I've traveled to urban areas like Chicago and Atlanta, to the most poverty-stricken districts, where we've seen success in STEM reform education. I've taken what I learned during the evaluation to Bunker Hill Community College in 2007, where I'm the Executive Director of Institutional Effectiveness. At Bunker Hill, I'm responsible for NIASC accreditation, strategic planning, budget allocation. Interestingly, Bunker Hill's budget is $52 million, which is pretty close to the $47 million Burlington School Committee budget. I'm also responsible for the academic and service program evaluations, state and federal reporting, and applied research at the college.
Okay, we're just about out of town, if you want to...
Okay, sure. I saw what worked there, and I brought it to Bunker Hill, and I think I can bring what I learned during the evaluations and what I've done at Bunker Hill Community College to the school committee in Burlington as we tackle the changes that are coming with the Every Student Succeed Act over the next three years.
Thank you, David. Next is Karen Levy.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate BCAT hosting us and the press and the moderator's attendance as well. I will try to be brief, which is not my specialty. I have over 20 years in legal experience, specifically focused on contracts, negotiating them, drafting them, litigating them. More importantly, I am a specialist. I've got over 10 years of experience as a mediator and escalation manager with Hewlett-Packard Company, resolving disputes, high-level, high-dollar amount, high emotional disputes between opposing parties. There's an art to that, and I think I've developed it well over the past 10 years. More importantly, I have absolutely no conflicts of interest with anyone within the town or the school district that would prevent me from actively negotiating any and all contracts that come before the board, importantly, the teachers' union contract. I also would be able to vote in all policy matters. Another crucial point for me is that there is currently, in my opinion, a lack of parent representation on the school committee. And what I mean by that is parents on the school committee who currently have children in our school district.
Okay, can you...
Am I out of time, too?
Almost, yeah. You've got a couple of seconds.
So I have a daughter in third grade, and I just, I think that everything changes. I think that schools change, children change, issues change, politics change, everything changes. And I think it's just time for the school committee to do the same, and I'd appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Karen. And now Christine Monaco.
Thank you, BCAT, and everyone involved in tonight's presentation. I'm Christine Monaco, and I've actually been on the school committee 24 years, and I was on three years prior to that in a different term. My husband Frank and I have lived in Burlington for 43 years. We have four children, all who went through the Burlington Schools, all who are very successful. Among them, they have 13 grandchildren. And my grandchildren range from very, very bright to a granddaughter who is severely handicapped. So I understand the needs of parents who have children at every point across the spectrum. And having all the grandchildren living here in Burlington is very special, and it keeps me very involved in our schools. My prior history has to do with, I was a recreation commissioner, a historical commissioner, I was on the recycle committee, the PTO president, you know, you name it, I've done it. We have absolutely great schools, and they are great because of forward-thinking leadership and careful, smart planning. My educational background is that I have a degree in mathematics from Merrimack College. I have a master's degree in business administration from Northeastern, both of which have served me very well.
Okay, you're just about out of time.
And I've been a teacher, not a regular teacher, but a special ed educator in the Burlington system far over 10 years, way back before I was ever on the school committee. You all know me. I thank you for your continued support.
Thank you very much. And now we move to the question portion. This is how it's going to work. The first question will come from Rich Hosford. And for this, and every question, by the way, will be asked of all of you. For the first round, we're going to go in the same order, and after that, we're going to mix it up a little bit. So, Mr. Hosford.
All right, thank you. My first question has to do with something that's a big concern for a lot of parents. In 2014, there was a risk behavior study done at the school. It showed some increase in students engaging in risky behaviors such as drug use, alcohol use, and getting into vehicles after somebody has either been drinking or after they've been drinking themselves. So what actions or policies would you recommend that the schools take to sort of alleviate these behaviors?
And we'll start with Christine.
Oh, okay. We've done that particular survey, which is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We did it four years ago, we did it two years ago. There were some discrepancies between the two, and my personal opinion is that there may have been some problem with the administration of the second one. So we administered a third one just last week or the week before, and I'm anxious to see what comes of that. I think it is the responsibility of the school committee to do our part by keeping our schools absolutely substance-free. And what we have done is we've partnered with the police, and actually quite recently, in the last couple of weeks, we had a walk-through with 16 canines in the building under a code blue. And we also did the parking lot, and there were no substances found. And that would have covered any number of illegal substances, including pills such as oxycodone, oxycontin, and suboxone. So I think it's our responsibility to keep the schools clean. But we also are partnering with a newly formed parent group, and we have an upcoming event in May that we're doing at the high school with the police department, and we have it built right into our curriculum as well. So we need to do a lot more.
Thank you. Next is Thomas.
Thank you. I think one of the most important things, ways the school department and the school committee can do is continue the risk behavior surveys. Well, there might be some disagreement or misunderstandings on how accurate they might be, but they at least show you, give you a sense as to what's going on out there. I mean, obviously, as far as the behavior of young men and young women, they're only in the school for six or seven hours a day, they're at home for most of the day. So there's only so far we can go in terms of keeping an eye on things, but we do have the ability to identify them, communicate with the students through the health department and guidance counselors to address any needs or issues that the students might feel that they have. But I think our biggest role and our biggest function is to make the community aware of what's going on, so the appropriate priorities, which are the schools, the families, the law enforcement agencies, the churches, the community groups are all aware of it and can play different roles in trying to address the situation.
Thank you very much. Now Karen.
Thank you. Rich, thank you for the question, because this particular issue is near and dear to my heart and something I am focusing on as part of my campaign. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey has been administered federally for about 25 years. It has been administered in Massachusetts for about the past 20 years. It is administered, or should be administered, at least in my opinion, every two years. It's not a question of re-administering a test to see if there was a flaw in a prior test. It's to gauge the behavior every two years, because the students are changing. Again, everything is changing. The substances involved are changing. For some reason, and I won't pretend to know what, Burlington discontinued the risk behavior survey for a period of approximately eight years, I want to say, between 2004 and 2012. The survey was not administered here. Then it was administered in 2012 and showed Burlington students answering at three times the state average for heroin usage. It was administered again in 2014, and that particular risk behavior had jumped to seven times the state average, which was very troubling. Those results took almost 16 months to be released to parents, and in the meantime, somewhere along the line, our task force was disbanded. So to answer your specific question, Rich, I'd like to see us put the task force back in place with members from the Board of Health, the administration, the school committee, importantly, parents. There is a wellness committee. Parents have finally been asked to join, but that has not happened yet. I'd also like to see us work with the state police. They have a program for drug recognition expertise that they're willing to spread out to the schools. And I have several other ideas, but I am out of time.
Thank you. And finally, David Levitt.
Thanks, Alan. Rich, I agree. Great, great question, very pertinent today in our high school and high schools across the state and across the country. Specifically, to answer the question, what policies and practices do we put in place? I agree, we should be working with the police and with parents, and importantly, health services should be included in that mix, too. They should be part of the conversation. We should be meeting regularly. I agree with Karen that we should be doing the survey frequently, every two to three years, which is common practice when you're administering a survey like that. Interestingly, a parent asked on Facebook recently, what would have happened when the dogs searched the high school a couple of weeks ago? What would have happened if something was actually found? Nothing was found, but what if something had been found? And the response was that a medical referral would have been given. I think in those instances, one thing I would like to see in the schools, when the police dogs are going and we're doing those random searches without notification next time, that someone from health services and counseling is available. So when, not if, when a student is caught with contraband and action is taken, that someone from health services there and counseling is there to talk to the student and the parents, who are going to be brought in immediately to immediately talk about it and provide counseling services, and not to delay that, because it's really important that it's tackled immediately.
Okay, thank you. The next question is going to come from Joy Richard, and I will begin with Thomas. But just to let you know, I'm going to mix up the order a little bit. If I should forget somebody, make sure you let me know. Also, I will signal you when you've got about 15 seconds, just so you can keep yourself on track. Joy.
Hi, thanks for having me today. Burlington is currently spearheading an initiative amongst 12 Middlesex Leagues towns that are exploring the possibility of drastically changing the start times at schools based on the research that supports a later start time for older students. What are your thoughts on this initiative?
And we'll start with Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. I'm certainly in favor of the initiative. It's something we've been talking about for a while. The problem with only one school changing their hours is the practical effect that it has on surrounding towns with athletic events and after-school programs and things of that nature, which is why the superintendent in the Middlesex League decided to act on it as a whole, because then all the football games, all the baseball games, or the basketball games, whatever, will be starting at the same time after school. So it was an initiative that's been going on for probably six months, these discussions are going. I think the research seems to support that a later start is beneficial to the high school students. And assuming that they can work out the logistics, I would be all in favor of it. There doesn't seem to be any reason not to do it, as long as the rest of the local schools are on board.
Thank you. Ms. Levy.
Thank you. So I also am completely in favor of that particular initiative. I know the high school bus picks up outside my bedroom window at a ridiculously early hour. I think, there's no question, but that the research shows that older kids benefit from, anybody benefits really, from adequate sleep, which these high school kids are just not getting right now. My understanding is one of the problems to date has been with the transportation logistics as well as the extracurricular sporting activities. I know the buses get used by multiple schools, and currently, as Ms. Monaco has pointed out on a few occasions, we don't have user fees for things like athletics and buses. I would like to put it out to the parents and see if they want the later start times badly enough to potentially bring in more buses, even if that involves user fees. But to at least put the option out there and get feedback across the board from all of the parents, and then figure out the logistics from there. As far as interfering with sports schedules, I think athletics and any extracurricular or physical activity for any student, anybody really, is extremely important, but I think that we would all agree that as a school district, academics need to come first, and we need to prioritize that, and then work the extracurricular athletic activities into that schedule. But look at what benefits the kids, their learning and their health and their stress levels first, and then back everything into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Levitt.
Thank you. I agree with the other candidates. It is an important thing to review. All the national research shows that a later start time for high school students is beneficial, improves student success for those students. We do need to think about in Burlington, how that impacts the other schools, because we do do the same buses, do all the routes, so how would that impact that? But I think if we can work with the other schools in the Middlesex League, and we can coordinate with the bus company and the schedules with input from the parents and from other community members, I think we could probably come up with a plan that would work, that would work with a later start time. With all the homework, I've talked to a lot of high school parents, they tell me with all the extra homework that students are getting and the extracurricular activities, students aren't getting to bed till late, and their early start time, they're exhausted. So it makes a lot of sense to have that later start time. I think we'll see a lot of improvement in student success if we go that route.
Thank you very much. And finally, Ms. Monaco.
Anyone who's had a high school student recognizes how difficult it is for the students to get up in the morning. Frankly, they're exhausted, they go to bed so late. So I'm definitely in favor of this. However, I think it has to be done as a league, because it's important that all of the cities and towns that have sporting events together compare notes and get on the same page, because you need that cooperation so that the times are available for practices and games. And as far as the busing goes, I really don't think the busing is a problem. I would be opposed to use-of-fees under any circumstances in this town. We have a great tax base. The commercial side pays $0.61 of every dollar of taxes that we take in. We have one of the lowest tax rates in the state, and we have a great bargain here, a great school. So I'm totally against use-of-fees, and I really don't think it would be necessary anyway, because we would simply work it out like we do. We work things out. We have a very progressive superintendent who will find a way, as long as all these communities agree.
Okay, thank you. All right, our next question will come from Rich Hosford.
All right. What capital or facilities projects do you think are most pressing for Burlington schools? And what would you like to see the school committee get onto the town meeting warrant that you think that town meeting will go along with?
We'll start with Karen.
Okay. So, there are several things. And again, I think it's the type of thing that we need parental input. We also need input from our existing facilities, folks. I know there's been a lot of talk about the boiler system, the heating and ventilation system at the high school, to the tune of $30 million and something dollars versus the cost of building a whole new high school, which is well in excess of $100 million. Obviously, we've just had significant improvements done at Marshall Simons, and the Memorial School is brand-new. Pine Glen is older. But I would have to say that probably the absolute top of my list in terms of, and these would not all be capital expenditures, but I think the top priority has got to be bringing our facilities into compliance with the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act. We currently have multiple school facilities that are not in compliance with this federal statute, and that troubles me from a human standpoint, it troubles me from a safety standpoint, it troubles me from a liability standpoint. There's currently not handicapped accessible parking that works with varsity field. There's not any handicap accessible access to the school committee meeting room after hours, unless you have a phone number for someone that you can call to get in. A parent or anyone else in a wheelchair cannot attend a school committee meeting. We've had issues with elevators in the past. So there are definitely some big projects that need to be taken on. I think we need to look to our internal experts for a priority list on that, and then run that by the community. But my personal priority would be compliance with the ADA.
Thank you. David, the same question.
Thank you. In the recent school committee meetings, it was talked about that the HVAC system at the high school needs replacement and repair, and that's been put forth to the state, and we think it's going to be approved. But we have to have a contingency plan in case it's not approved. If that doesn't happen, we've been told that the boilers could fail next winter possibly. So we need to really look at what that long-term investment is at the high school, whether just replacing the systems, to buy us another five years, is the right move, especially if we don't get approved this spring. We have to consider maybe possible building a new high school. Another project would be looking at the elementary schools, particularly the Pine Glen and the Fox Hill. We need to look at those schools. They're probably about 50 years old, I believe, now. I go to the Fox Hill every day to pick up my kids, and I see the condition of the school. While it's a great school, and they keep it up as best they can, it needs a lot of work. I see those portable units at the Fox Hill School where they house the special needs students, and they look like they're falling apart. And those are students who have special needs and should really have an environment of learning that's better than what they're at right now. We've heard about the districting at the elementary school, and the incoming kindergarten classes might be a little disproportionate at the elementary schools. So maybe we need to consider whether building a new elementary school and combining the Pine Hill and the Fox Hill makes sense, or whether it doesn't. So those are the type of capital plans that I would put forth.
Okay, thank you. Christine.
Yes, the town has a whole lot of needs, and what we do, we have very good relationships with the town side, and we work closely so that capital items get put onto a bond schedule in the order that the town can manage them, frankly, because there's a limit of how much money you can spend at one time. We are about to go out and do a brand-new master plan for the schools, and we're doing that because no matter what project we do, we need a master plan. So our first priority is to get the high school refurbished. There is absolutely no reason, under the sun, to build a new high school, as much as we would like one, it's simply not affordable. The taxpayers in town would be terribly burdened by that. We have a building that's in good condition, and we've kept it up for many, many years, and we simply need to update some aspects of the building. Beyond that, we need to work on Pine Glen and Fox Hill. And the old master plan had us either combining them into one new school, perhaps at Fox Hill, or redoing both of them. That is still to be determined based on the master plan. The accessibility is, Karen and I were both at the Disability Access Commission the other day, and the parking she's referring to is already in the works. It's going to Planning Board, and it's going to Conservation. The accessibility is not an actual out-of-compliance, because the high school and all the other schools are accessible. We put in an elevator to be accessible. We simply need to arrange for people to get into the school committee room without breaking safety protocol of having open doors. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Thomas.
Thank you. As far as the facilities go, we have a 10-year capital plan, and we had a 10-year master plan that's just about reaching the end of its 10 years. Under that master plan, the first things on the list were the new Memorial School and the rehabbing of the middle school, which have been accomplished. Next up is the high school. This building was built in 1972. It's 45-plus years old. I don't think you could dislodge it with a bomb, so it's solid, but it's not, the systems are getting older. We have a statement of interest before the MSBA for approval to replace the HVAC system and some other interior modifications. That's estimated to be about a $30 million project. If we get MSBA approval, they'll pay hopefully about 50% of that work, and we can move forward with it. It's been on the list, or it's been submitted to them two or three times, two or three years in a row now, and we have not made the cut. We're hoping it'll work this year. If not, as David mentioned, we're going to have to do something to keep things together. The worst-case scenario is we've got to replace the whole heating system on the town's own dime, and that's what we're trying to avoid. The master plan also talked about new schools at the... The master plan also talked about new schools with the Fox Hill and Pine Glen. We've talked about combining them. That would make a very large elementary school, which is not going to be very workable in my opinion, but it's something that we have looked at. So they're all expensive solutions to very real problems and we continue to work with the town on them as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Next question comes from Joy.
One of the many responsibilities of the school committee is to negotiate teacher contracts every three years. Not everyone currently in the five-person committee is able to participate due to conflicts of interest. Do you think this has any impact on negotiation outcomes and if so, why or why not?
And we'll begin with David Levitt.
Thank you, it's a great question, Joy. I think it is important that every member of the school committee be able to negotiate collective bargaining. I personally have no conflicts, I have no relatives in Burlington or work for the school department, so I'd be able to negotiate any collective bargaining that came before the school committee. But I do think it's important, right now only one person has no conflict, so we have to invoke the rule of necessity, which means that the people who wouldn't normally be able to negotiate are allowed to because of the rule of necessity with only one person being able to. I don't think that's the best thing for Burlington. I think people on the school committee should be free of any of those conflicts and be able to negotiate the contract to provide the best compensation for our units. And I think it's important that every member has a say in it and doesn't have that conflict so it doesn't have any appearance of anything controversial.
Thank you. Christine Monaco.
Well, I'd like to make a correction. There are three members of the five-member board who have no conflict of interest. I'm one of them. And we only have two members of the school committee on the negotiating team, so we have three members that can easily rotate through the negotiating teams. We have great teacher contracts and we've worked very hard over the years to do important things with those contracts. And conflict of interest has never, ever been an issue in any manner, way, shape or form, whether it's teacher's contract or any other contract. We work with the superintendent and a negotiator. We have subcommittees from the school committee. I am generally on the one for the teachers, so I can tell you that we have worked over the years on a very strong teacher's contract. We removed the bottom two steps about 10 years ago so that we could attract the best teachers and keep them. We then added in two more steps over the years to adjust our salary so that we were in the upper third of the Middlesex League. We also adjusted our contracts to remove the half-days that were so difficult for parents and we put in staff development days in their place. It was very strong negotiating. We have a great contract, we have a wonderful teachers' union.
Thank you. And Karen Levy. Oh, I'm sorry. I knew this was going to happen. Thomas Murphy.
I didn't answer this one yet.
Oh, you didn't, did you?
Actually, it's Thomas. Yes.
Okay. In any event, I'm the bad guy who has a relative who works in the school department. I'm one of the bad guys. I have a sister who's a teacher in the system. Prior to her coming, moving to Burlington to work, I used to frequently be on the school committee subcommittee that negotiated with the teachers. Once she came on board, I had to switch to some of the other units that we do. So frankly, it hasn't harmed this process at all. As Chris said, we can only have two school committee members on any negotiating team because otherwise we'd be conflict of the open meeting law. And as a practical matter, a good portion of the negotiations are done by the school administration, usually the superintendent and the school's attorney who sits in on the negotiating as well. So frankly, in my opinion, it has no effect whatsoever on either negotiating the contracts or otherwise the functioning of the school board.
Okay. Now we'll try Karen Levy.
My turn?
Yes.
So I have very strong feelings on this matter and with all due respect to the position of the incumbents, I think when it comes to contract negotiations and the effect of conflicts of interest, whether they are real or perceived, you don't know what you don't know. You don't know what effect that has, especially because contract negotiations are done behind the scenes, necessarily so. It's just impossible to know and I think that it's imperative and my two decades of experience have shown that it's imperative that there be an absence of conflict of interest. I also think from what I have seen of the different unit contracts, it's critical that we have someone who knows how to negotiate and draft through various nuances that can become a problem down the road. I believe the Unit D contract at the last school committee meeting or the one before, Dr. Conti and Mr. Nelson and several people made reference to the fact that it was next to impossible to understand previously, yet it had taken multiple years to be redrafted. I don't know why that would be. It's great that we have a school attorney involved, but I think that it brings just a tremendous benefit to have someone with my particular skill set on board to be able to negotiate that contract. All of the contracts, including third-party contractors, jobs that go out for bid. Not only do I have exactly the skill set we need there, but I have precisely the motivation to make sure that everyone is happy, that everyone is treated fairly, that everyone benefits equally. I want our teachers happy, I want our schools in good shape, I want our contractors happy. I'm your contracts girl.
Okay, thank you. For this next section, we're changing it up a little bit. Now each of you gets to ask a question of each of the other candidates and each of you will have 90 seconds to respond. So the first question will come from Ms. Monaco.
Okay. Last year, over 60 homes were built in Burlington and many more on the way according to the building inspector. Many of these are from older homes being torn down, small, older houses, and great big family homes have gone up. Much more density housing is already in the pipeline at Northwest Park and other places. The Friendly 40B being discussed by the selectmen may become a reality as we are very close to dropping under the required 10% affordable housing. What ideas do you have about addressing the potential enrollment problem that we face?
And we'll start with Thomas.
The potential enrollment problem that we face is certainly nothing new. These things tend to go in waves. We've had these bubbles before. And depending on how much lead time you have to try to plan for them and how much money is available to deal with it, there are different ways of handling it. One way is building a new memorial school larger than the old memorial school, which we did a few years ago. We were lucky enough to get state approval on that and they paid for more than half of the building. Without that available, then we look at portables, which we've done before as well, because that sometimes is a short-term solution to an immediate problem. That is certainly not the preferred way of doing it, but sometimes you have to do what you have to do. So it's an ongoing problem. We keep an eye on the trends, we keep an eye on the new housing. We work with the town in terms of capital needs and capital planning. And whether it's restructuring or rebuilding a new school, whether it's adding portables, whether it's redistricting amongst the schools to fill up vacant rooms, depends on the situation, but we've done it before and we can do it again.
Thank you. Same question, Karen?
Thank you. I think that this is something that absolutely has to be addressed with the new master plan. My understanding is that the current master plan has lapsed and we're in the process through the committee of putting together a new master plan. But I think that's exactly the type of information that needs to be taken into account there. I think it may very well be time for us to do an attrition and retention study. I think we have a significant number of students leaving the public schools, at least at the high school level, and moving on to private schools. I think we need to get a better proactive handle on exactly what we estimate these numbers to be. I'm not saying that I can do that personally, but there are absolutely algorithms that can be run and experts that can be spoken to and brought in to look at those numbers. I think Ms. Monaco is absolutely correct. I think Burlington is exploding in terms of its population and that brings, like everything in life, positives and drawbacks. And accommodating the school population will involve being able to accurately predict it and then address whatever those needs turn out to be.
Okay, thank you. David?
Thank you. I'm in favor of the Friendly 40B. I think it's important for the town because without the Friendly 40B, a developer would be able to come in and just develop a project without any input from the town. So I think it's really important the town has input on what's being built and I think the Friendly 40B might be the solution there. But however, it will impact our schools. And like I talked about before, we have to look at the elementary schools, particularly the Pine Glen and the Fox Hill. Karen mentioned the master plan, hopefully a new master plan that's being developed. We'll talk about that because if this development is put in place and we have a whole lot of new students, we already know that the incoming kindergarten class is going to be large, there's going to be disproportionate classes there. So we need to look at maybe combining the two schools or, like Tom said, building a bigger memorial school. That should be part of the master plan because this 40B is just the first step. Before the end of the 10 years, we might be in another situation where we're approaching the 10% threshold and might have to look at another 40B resolution. So it's important that the master plan addresses that. It's important that we look at our schools that can handle that. It's important that everybody in the town has a say in how that moves forward.
Thank you very much. All right, our next question will come from Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. Used to be I didn't need these. This is going to all three candidates, obviously. Typically, before running for a town-wide office such as school committee, selectmen, whatever, people have served on town meeting or in Ways and Means or some other organization or group. So to Ms. Levy and Mr. Levitt, I'd ask you to tell the voters what you have done to prepare yourself to serve in the school committee. To Mrs. Monaco, obviously you are already on the committee, so please describe what you do to keep yourself current and in a position to continue to serve.
Okay, and we'll start with Ms. Levy.
Thank you. So I have a suspicion that a lot of candidates who first serve on town committee or other boards before moving on to the school committee are, at the risk of dating myself, probably considerably younger than I am. Again, I have years of experience in the corporate world, in the contracts world. I have a daughter in the schools. I think that I have more than enough experience. I have worked for Hewlett-Packard for over 10 years in a multicultural, multi-level business environment, working with people of all kinds of backgrounds and cultures and can bring them together on various issues. I talk to parents on a daily basis, parents who have kids in the schools right now. What I refer to is those of us in the trenches. And I think, again, based on the fact that everything changes so vastly and so often, that that sort of ear to the ground is irreplaceable. And again, I think that everything changes and I think our schools have changed and I think that our schools are great, but that we need to look at changing the status quo. It's just time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Levitt?
Thanks. Well, I don't have experience on town committees and in town politics. I do have a lot of experience in education and I've been involved in education for over 15 years. I spent the first half of my career, as I mentioned earlier, my opening, traveling the country, performing evaluations for the National Science Foundation, evaluating STEM education reform across the country that they funded. They spent over $100 million to improve STEM education across the country. And I traveled to the districts all across the country in rural areas and urban areas to see what works and what doesn't work. I've talked to administrators, students, parents, community members, teachers, to find out what really works. And I did that for about eight years and some of the reports that I co-authored are actually on my website, levittforchange.com. I suggest everybody go to that website and see the reports that I've co-authored with my colleagues, the evaluations that we've done in rural education and urban education and historically black colleges and tribal colleges and universities. But for the last eight years, I've been at Bunker Hill Community College, involved in higher ed, where I'm responsible for the things I mentioned earlier. But in that capacity, I also serve in a lot of statewide task force and committees. I sit on the Massachusetts Task Force for Student Learning Outcomes Assessment. I sat as a higher ed representative when Park was being developed and I imagine I'm going to be a higher ed representative as MCAS 2.0 moves forward. Things are changing very fast over the next three years with the passing of the Every Student Succeed Act, which replaces No Child Left Behind. That means Common Core is going to go away. That means Park is going to go away. We need somebody on the school committee who knows how to implement curriculum and knows a lot about assessment to make sure Burlington has the right curriculum and the right assessment for our students and teachers, and I think I'm that person.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Monaco.
To the voters out there who may be watching this, let me tell you that experience on the school committee is vital. I don't have to do anything to stay current with being on the school committee because I do it every day. I get phone calls every day. I work hard every day. There is so much institutional knowledge that we have as a result of our service that it just cannot be emphasized enough how important it is to have the background. I'd like to give you one example. I've noticed that one of our opponents has been talking about the AP test scores going down and how that's been happening over the last few years and that there seems to be no explanation for it, but there is an explanation for it. And it's that back a few years ago, we decided at the request of students, excuse me, that we would give more credit for AP courses. So they became five-level courses instead of ours four-level courses. And as a result, we required the students to take the test. So even if you're doing poorly in the class, you still have to take the test. And we're not a community that drives ourselves for test scores. We want all the kids experienced in these tests because they do better in college. It's a better way to approach things. There is just absolutely nothing that compares to the experience of these two current school committee members. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our third question comes from Ms. Levy.
Thank you. So as with Mr. Murphy's question, I guess mine is a little bit divided in one direction for the incumbents and a different one for Mr. Levitt. I personally have seen, and I think we all have, a lot of activity in these past couple of months since we pulled papers in January and we found out that this was going to be a contested election. We have now had a drug, canine drug search conducted at the high school. We've had a security expert brought in to discuss security protocols to the extent he could with the school committee and the parents watching. As Ms. Monaco noted, we went, she and I both went to the Disability Access Commission meeting this week. I'd actually been to a couple before that and spoken to some of the representatives on that committee. But there's been this sort of flurry of activity since January, yet in watching some of the old school committee meetings, Mr. DeSimone, one of the former school committee chairmans, raised the issue back in September of 2013 that parents were concerned about drug use at the high school and what was the possibility of bringing in canine dogs. The security protocols, parents have been curious and anxious and understandably so ever since the Sandy Hook incident a few years ago and 9/11 prior to that. Regarding the Disability Access Commission, the parking spaces that are currently in the works have been before the school committee for almost a year now in terms of when they were first brought to the attention of the committee. And so I guess my question is, why do these things take so long? And what assurances do the voters have in town that they will either be completed before the election or that they will be in fact completed after the election in terms of being brought to conclusion? And then my question for you, David, would be what is your perspective on that and do you feel that these things should take this long and what steps could you take to maybe speed the process up?
Okay, we'll start with David Levitt.
Okay. Thanks for the question, Karen. I do think it has taken too long. I think there's been some missteps along the way. I think it's an important issue that really needs to be addressed in our schools because the safety and security of our students is really important. As a school committee member, I'd like to work with the entire community from the police department and health services, definitely input from the parents and the parent groups that are out there that are really active in our community, who haven't really had a lot of say on the school committee. I like to bring them in on a regular basis to really have a say on the school committee because I think they can really help shape the policy in this area. I hope that if I'm on the school committee, I would bring that to everybody.
Thank you. Christine Monaco.
Excuse me, I would disagree with the premise. I think that especially with the drug and alcohol issues, we have been working with the police department to come up with the timeframe for doing these drug searches. the police department to come up with the timeframe for doing these drug searches. And we have placed police officers in both the high school and the middle school to help out the areas' resource officers, to work with the kids, and to, one-on-one, make sure that we don't have drug issues and alcohol issues in our schools. We've been very proactive. We have a very proactive superintendent. As far as safety goes, Town Meeting has expended a great deal of money for many safety features. We have a state-of-the-art safety protocol in all of our schools at this point in time. As far as the handicap parking spaces go, they were brought to us right after the high school student parking lot had been redone. And we have been trying to find a way to put them in place. In fact, Craig Robinson is to be commended for doing such great work in finding a place to put them and getting them before the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Tom?
Okay, yes. All right, and Thomas Murphy.
Thank you. Frankly, I'm not quite sure what the question was, but the implication seemed to be that there's a flurry of activity now because I'm guessing we suddenly have a challenge in our race, so we've now got to run around and do things. And I couldn't say that's any further from the truth. You can ask Chief Kent how often and how frequently we meet with him on safety issues. We do it consistently. We've been doing it since he came on board. We meet with different town officials, different town boards, Burlington Community Life Center. We're all trying to get on the same page, and we constantly meet and talk about things, and we make decisions. When we make them, we make them after giving them due consideration. We don't do them just because we're in the middle of a reelection phase here that seem to have been implied. And I think we've done a very good job over the years. We've spent a lot of the town's money in redoing the entryways to our schools. We've put all sorts of controls and safety features on the classrooms in a lot of the schools. It's been an ongoing and constantly progressing process, and we'll continue to do it, and it'll take as long as it needs to take.
Okay, thank you. Our final question from Mr. Levitt.
Thanks. I'd like to start, as mentioned earlier about the AP test scores, and I'd just like to respectfully disagree with that. Over the last five years or so, I agree that test-taking has gone up. More students in Burlington High School are taking AP courses, and that's great. As far as the passing rates going down, it's not true that all have gone down. In English and foreign language, the passing rates have remained pretty steady over that five-year period. It's computer science, technology, and math where we've seen the pass rates go down over the last four or five years, one as much as 20 percentage points. Coincidentally, the rate started to go down in 2011 when we implemented the one-to-one iPad program. So on that note, my question is, what direct evidence is there for the impact of the one-to-one program that has had on student learning?
And we'll start with Ms. Monaco.
The one-to-one program that Mr. Levitt is referring to is the iPads. And we have one-to-one iPads from grade one through grade 12. It is a tool. It is a delivery system so that no matter how a child learns, we can deliver the curriculum in a way that helps that child. I can say from being a part of the school committee that I believe that it has been a wonderful tool. There are always problems where some parents don't want their children on social media and things like that, and I understand, and we do everything we can to help them with that. However, I believe that it's a great tool. Back to the AP test, the fact of the matter is that right around 2011, we required the students to take the AP test. Now, maybe they're doing very well in the English and the scores are staying high, and maybe they're having more trouble with the other. But if you want credit for an AP course, which is more credit than you get for an honors course, you have to take the test. So an example is my oldest grandson, who took an AP computer course. He didn't like it. He didn't do well in it, and he got a one on the test. But he had to take the test, and that is why the scores in those areas are what they are. We do not push kids to do well. We don't limit the number of kids that can take the tests. We encourage them to take the test because it's how they learn and how they do well in college.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, same question?
Yes, I believe the question had to do with the effectiveness of the one-to-one program in the school department. As Christine mentioned, and I'm sure everybody is aware, that's essentially the iPad program that we've been doing for four or five years now, phasing it in as we went along. Technology, obviously, is increasingly important in today's world, whether it's in school or whether it's in the workplace or just communicating. And every year it changes, and every year it gets a little bit more complicated and a little bit different. So I think the decision was made, back when it was made, for purposes of exposing the students to using those types of devices. They're going to be using them as they move forward to college, and they're going to be using them as they move into the workplace. It is not an end or a means to an end. It's just one of the, I'm sorry, it's not an end to the means. It's one of the means to the end. It's getting late. And as Chris said, it's a way to deliver the curriculum and deliver the content to the students. It's really no different than when they were using textbooks. It's essentially the same material. It allows it to be delivered differently and hopefully more effectively. How to measure it? I would say you measure it by watching how the children do as they progress through the system, how they move on to college, and they move on to the world. And frankly, they do very well.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Levy.
Thank you. So I don't know if I can answer the specific question, but I'll give my input anyway. Like you, I know that you've mentioned this in prior interviews and discussions, I think that with the iPads having been around for five years now in the schools, that it's critical that we take an in-depth look at that and look at some data and figure out where they're helping, where they're causing a distraction, where or if they're creating any sort of regression or hindrance to the learning. There are certainly plenty of studies out there from the education world stating that when technology is introduced improperly, it can create issues as well as solve some. I had a parent-scientist make the comment to me at an event a couple of weeks ago that, you know, the iPads are great, but they're strictly for technological consumption. They don't push our kids to create anything. I, with all due respect, would disagree. It's not the same as a textbook because a kid can be sitting in his bedroom claiming he's reading his social studies book but playing Candy Crush. Not that I would ever do that. So it's like everything in life. It has its pros. It has its cons. I think that we perhaps need to moderate and regulate it a little bit better and crunch into the data a little bit more there before we make decisions about how and to what extent to proceed with the program. I think it's a great program, though, and I'm thrilled to tell folks that my third grader uses an iPad in school. I just think we need a little bit more governance and regulation and input there.
Thank you very much. Now we move into the final phase, our closing statements. This time you get two minutes. In the drawing earlier, let's see, Thomas Murphy, you get to go first.
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Alan. Thank you to the panel. Thank you to my fellow candidates, and thank you to the people at home for taking the time to watch this and listen to it. Being a member of the school committee is a very important position. It's a very important position in the town, both for residents who have children in the school system and residents without. Obviously, providing a quality education for the young people is of utmost importance, but also being prudent and watching over the tax dollars is important to all the residents as well. As a school committee member, there are a lot of things that come into play. It's not just going to a meeting twice a month and sitting up there in the dais for an hour or two. There's meetings, there's subcommittee meetings, there's going to school events, there's going to plays, there's meeting with town officials. There's a whole host of things that takes a lot of time and takes a lot of personal sacrifice. We have to be ready and willing to sacrifice that time for the good of the community. I've been on the school committee now for 20 years, plus almost 21 years. And one good thing about when you run for reelection is you have a platform or a record on which to run. Sometimes that can be a good thing, sometimes that's a bad thing, but I would suggest that in this case it's a very good thing. If you look back over the past 20 years, the town of Burlington has made great progress in the school department, both physical facilities and educational content and delivery. Town of Burlington School Department is in a very good place right now. It's been my experience over the course of 35 years practicing law and being in the workforce that people who do a good job, people who perform well, are usually retained to continue to perform well. If you do a good job well, you should just keep doing it. And I would submit that the school committee and the school department is doing great things in the town of Burlington, and I would ask you to allow me to keep performing my duties and give me one of your votes on April 9th, and I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Next up is Christine Monaco.
Thank you to everyone. It's always a good forum so that you can express your views. I would like to say a couple of things that are semi-rebuttal. One is, I don't think it matters if someone has one child or two child children, or in my case, 13 grandchildren in the schools. I think it's important to note that the work that we do is for every child in the school system, and you don't personalize it. You work for every child, whether you have any kids in the system at the moment or not. Our classrooms, as Tom alluded to, are alive with high-level instruction at every level. Our schools have never, ever been better. We have a wonderful superintendent who's very proactive. We have smart, energetic, organized leadership. We have a hard-working school committee. We had three young men at our meeting last week who have designed an Android app for detecting concussions. They did this on their own, applying the knowledge that they learned in our schools. They're going to the Kennedy Space Center, to the Innovation Summit, to present to investors. We are so proud of them. It is stories and conversations like these that tell us we're on the right track. We're doing great things. We have come so far. We have low taxes. We have great property values. And as Tom said, we're doing a good job, so please help us to continue to do that. Help us keep our schools on track. You need our experience, and I hope that you will give me one of your two votes on April 9th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm Karen Levy.
Thank you. So in many ways, I agree, actually, with a lot of things that Mr. Murphy and Ms. Monaco have said. I do think that our schools are great. I agree that there is still a long way to go. And at the risk of being completely repetitive, I just feel strongly that it is time to let new leadership in. That is clearly going to have to happen at some point. People can't and don't want to serve forever and ever, and I think that now is that time. It's certainly that time for me personally. I was fortunate enough to cut back on my full-time work last year to dedicate more time to the community, to the town, to the schools. And I picked the schools because education is so near and dear to my heart. And I agree, Tom, that being on the school committee will require great sacrifice. God knows that campaigning for it has. But that's what being a parent is all about. My husband and I were offered very attractive relocation packages last year with Hewlett-Packard Company, and we turned them down because we are so happy here in Burlington, because our daughter is so happy here in Burlington, because she's so happy at school. She refused the idea of even thinking about leaving her school and her friends. So I don't, I'm not here to say that the schools are in awful shape or that the current committee's done a horrible job. I'm here to say that it is time to move forward and it's time to take another fresh look at things. And I've already beaten my legal skills into the ground. Something that didn't come up in any of the questioning that is extremely important to me is to find a way to get parents in the community and residents in the community and even the students themselves more involved in the school committee's work. We need to get people to those meetings. We need to get people to have a voice. We need input. We need to make decisions that the majority of the town agrees with. And I believe, again, because of my skills, experience, and where I'm at in life right now, that I can be that person, and I would respectfully ask for one of your two votes on April 9th. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, David Levitt.
Thank you, Alan, for moderating, and thank you, Rich and Joy, for great questions. And thanks to my fellow candidates for a really good discussion here tonight. And thanks to BCAT for the opportunity to really discuss our views with everybody and the viewers at home. I think you've got a good flavor of what everybody brings to the table. I've mentioned my experience and skills, what I bring to the table, so I don't need to go over those again, but I want to talk about just some of the things I'd like to see. I talked about the culture of evidence and that it's not just numbers, it's quantitative and qualitative data. It's all about accountability. It's bringing everybody from the community to talk about these things, not just a select group of people. And it's looking outside the community, too. It's looking at other districts in our state, regionally or even nationally, and see what's going on there to see if we can bring those things to Burlington. Things are moving very fast, like I mentioned, with the passing of ESSA in December. By 2017, by the 2017-2018 school year, the new curriculum will have to be in place, and a new assessment will come in place. And the new assessment under ESSA is not a prescribed assessment like Park was. Districts can have an opportunity to do more than just standardized testing. So we'll be able to do standardized testing and other measures of student success. What will that be? It could be a portfolio of student work. It could be audio or video for students who can't do written work. It could be like when New Hampshire is piloting up an assessment right now on competency-based assessment. Each individual student's competency is assessed, but it's also a district-wide thing. I think that's something that we can bring here to Burlington. We talked about AP, but I think one thing that's lacking in Burlington right now is dual enrollment with the community college. We do a lot of it at Bunker Hill Community College. I was at a statewide meeting last week and talked to a high-level official at Middlesex Community College and asked him about the dual enrollment program at Burlington and found out that we only have two dual enrollment classes being offered currently at the high school. He also mentioned to me that they do a lot of dual enrollment at Lowell High School, where a Lowell High School student can graduate with 24 college credits transferable to any public institution in Massachusetts. I don't think we can do that many courses here in Burlington, but wouldn't it be great if we could have our students graduating with 15 college credits that they can transfer to any public institution in Massachusetts and start a semester ahead of their peers and save that money for other things, like the expensive books that they're going to have to buy? Like Karen mentioned earlier, I think it's time for an evaluation of the one-to-one program to really see what's working. If things are working, maybe we can scale it up to the other grades. If things aren't working, can it be fixed? And if it can't be fixed, maybe we just need to get rid of it altogether. But a thorough evaluation needs to happen. With all that said, I think I bring a unique set of skills and experience, very involved at the state level in education. I could bring that to the Burlington School Committee, so I ask you to give me one of your votes on April 9th and ask you to come out and vote on April 9th regardless. Thank you.
Well, we've reached the end of our discussions. In closing, I'd like to thank the candidates, Christine Monaco, Thomas Murphy, Karen Levy, and David Levitt, not only for sharing their vision with the people of Burlington, but for also for offering their time and their services to the town. Thank you to Joy Richard, representing the Burlington Union, and Rich Hosford of B News. And finally, thank you to Jen Dodge and the rest of the staff and volunteers here at BCAT that made this all happen. Remember, Election Day is Saturday, April 9th. The polls at the high school are open from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Here's your chance to have a direct say in how your community operates, how your town government is run. Make sure you take advantage of that. Don't pass it up. Get out and vote, and thank you for watching.